All meeting order. Budget regions, please.
I publicly make this the flag of the next United America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you go ahead. What do you got a chance, Kristi?
I don't know, that's the movie. President Dom.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Senator Agan.
Here.
Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Trudy Thomas.
I am here.
Trudy Zimmerman. And St. And Trudy Wazorek.
Here. Okay, we'll move on to public comments number one. Anybody out there?
I don't see anyone.
All right. Okay, we'll go to five point one then, kind of. Budget, annual budget appropriation ordinance. Our second reading.
So, uh, this is presented, everybody's in your packet, you should have had the full, all the beautiful pictures, all the details, all the charts, all the narrative.
Two hundred and some days.
Yes, it's, it's a lovely reading, a lot of great things. So no, it is good reading because it shows all the accomplishments for the, for the past year, what we're looking to do, the lines of the budget for this year. It has all the great, uh, and it's done, meets the budget standards because Andy does a lot of work and the staff are pulling this together so that, uh, it means for the, anybody that's viewing it from the general public, they really understand kind of, um, versus just the numbers, it goes into everything, their narrative view. So it definitely represents everything that was discussed by the board and Andy's narrative, and he's online, he's at home. Um, just the changes that were made from when we last, that, that would. And, um, at this point, um, if there were any suggested changes that need to be made, once it goes into public, uh, hearing, then we can make those changes between intended to the final. But Andy, do you have anything that you want to add on the budget?
Uh, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Guess that's a no.
Andy, I can hear you on the Zoom. I don't know if they can hear you in the room.
Oh. So I gotta be careful what I say.
I can hear you on, too.
Elizabeth, can you hear me or no?
Yes. Yes.
So I was just, I would, I don't have anything to say other than compliment the leadership team because they all put a ton of work into it. Uh, as well as yourself, Elizabeth, there's a lot of work that goes into the document. Um, so well done, and that is why it does receive that budget award every year, it's because all the work people put in. And then just to restate, um, what you said, and this goes back really to the planning that began in July and August. So that tentative budget in front of you right now is really built off of the direction we got from the board going back, you know, to last August. That's it.
All right, any questions, I think?
So on Tuesday night, you'll pass an ordinance that's in here, and then from there, it's ready to be posted in the newspaper. Um, it'll run there as required with the public hearing, that'll have, be held in February. We'll send communication over to the county, so we'll have a copy of this as well. And, um, that'll be published with the clerk over there, and it'll be on our website.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to five point two, update on the historic structures. Jen.
Hi. I'm Jen Oliver, landscape architect in the planning department. I prepared a report to update everyone on the status of our historic structures. I also have.
Are you gonna run it from here or down, right?
Wait, I'm viewing it on. So you have to share your screen. You have it pulled up? Pull up. Um, so anyways, it's. Um, well, since she made you criticals.
One quick, uh, call, we want, uh, what's progress on the football building demolition, that took out?
That's done, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm, it's just the final little, um, you know, deficiency list, you know? Some of the stuff, but everything was, um, down, everything has been restored. Um, we have propane yet to still just move around and check it around, we gotta move it for demo, um.
So there's still a shop down there, too?
Yeah, there's still a shop, and it has a new door and, and, um, new electric, and, um, it, it, um, it went really well. So like I said, we're just waiting for last minute things, um, to get finalized. But, yeah, the other two buildings came down as well, so the, oh.
So all the demo that we.
All of the demo, yep, that was planned for, um, has been done.
Excellent.
Yep.
Do you want me to show from the center? It's opening up there.
And how's your patient at home?
My patient at home is great. Yep, he's walking. It's amazing, he will come, he can get a new hip and, uh, in the morning at seven, and you can come home by three thirty, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
John's back to work.
He's online tonight.
Yeah. Yes, I, I'm, I'm very thankful that the snow, um, waited until just recently because I would have had to do a lot of it. Um, no, I'm still doing it all, but I would have been, you know, really worried about it all, so, you know, before he was actually walking and things, so thank you for asking.
Oh, sure.
He's glad to be back at work.
Good, so he is back to work.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Yep.
My sister had a knee replacement. Six o'clock.
Snow soon.
Yeah, they don't watch it.
That is crazy.
My wife didn't want me either.
So you're, you're in limo for the whole period.
Probably is my.
They didn't have any snow, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, Sean's gonna, I'm sorry, Sean's gonna call in, he won't be counted, we're not taking any votes tonight, but he will be present, if that's okay.
Sure.
So he almost very far, no, I called him.
They had no smell on my hand?
Wyoming.
For Wyoming.
No.
All right, here comes Sean. Just let me get him in the room here.
You want to, David?
Hi Sean, good evening. Hi Sean, good evening. Sean, glad you could join us. They're not here, it's at home, I just wanted to ensure that we're recording that they can hear us at home. We're not even, we need to record it. Okay, hold on a second. Can I see by a show of hands for those staff remotely, can you, can you hear us in the boardroom? Andrew, can you hear us?
There.
You can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. We just wanted to check sound, it appears that maybe just Andy, uh, he can hear us, so we're good, all right. Sean, welcome.
Okay.
All right, I'll get started.
All right.
Historic structures status report. There we go. So the district has an abundance of structures that we have to make decisions about, um, do they stay or do they go? The five that we're gonna talk about in this report are unique for both their history and potential for future use. Um, while historic preservation is not the district's primary focus, it is one of our many ancillary efforts. Uh, we have a responsibility to evaluate and give special consideration, as is written into our act and our guidelines, which, um, the excerpts are in your written report that was in the board packet. So from the social aspect, preservation promotes greater shared knowledge about our past, strengthens regional identity and local pride. Um, it provides an opportunity for heritage tourism, which could bring more people to our site, so lots of positives there. Some of the ways that we honor that responsibility that we have to preserve history, um, is through our site master planning. A site master plan is a dynamic, long-term planning document that provides a framework for future growth. Um, this is done with careful research, analysis, and community input, that all goes into the plan. In addition to the physical characteristics of the site, we're mindful of the cultural history, too. Um, we collect this historical data by way of structure reports and archaeological studies. Some of the factors that have gone into the decision to stabilize the five subjects that we're gonna talk about in this report are, um, whether they are part of a master plan, and most of these are. Are they significant enough to have a plaque? A couple of them are. Um, and these have been previously valued, evaluated, and have had investments made into their stabilization. Recognition plaques, um, basically, they are commemorative. They can be awarded, uh, based on certain criteria, like the building's age. Um, the applicant has to do their research, fill out the paperwork correctly, pay the fee, and then the organization awards the plaque. Two of our structures have plaques, um, one of which, um, the lower one, the Kennedy Way Station, was placked before we acquired it, the Powers Walker was placked after we restored it in twenty thirteen. Um, so there are some restrictions to modifications, but really the only ramifications, uh, would be to void the right to display that plaque if you make certain aesthetic changes to the structure. Through the years, we have restored several structures, um, starting with the Weidrich Farm in the eighties, and then on to Powers Walker Brookdale, where we are now, and, uh, in the two thousands, McConnell. And then, although they're not as old, um, only about seventy years, we could mention Prairie View and Lost Valley, too. So here's a map showing where the ones that we're talking about tonight are. First, we're gonna talk about, uh, Campbell-Gottwin down at Fox Bluff, that's in the southeastern corner of the county. And then the two of the Glacial Park, um, and McConnell Farm north of that, and then to Kennedy, right on the road from here. At Fox Bluff is the former Campbell-Gottwin, um, the Fox River Valley is rich in Native American history, it was a highway for them, um, and then the Campbell-Gottwin was there from nineteen oh seven to twenty eleven, so it's over a hundred years. It was part of the fresh air movement. Um, the focus of this program was on nutrition and health, uh, by providing sunshine, fresh air, and food. Fun fact, the annual report for this camp listed the average weight gains of the campers. Over time, the post, the focus expanded by nineteen twenty-three, uh, educational and recreational activities were part of the mission. Um, there was another sister camp adjacent to it, uh, that focused on tuberculosis patients, children. The two camps ended up merging once that was no longer an issue, and, uh, I think that was in nineteen twenty-two, no, they merged in nineteen thirty-nine. Starting in the sixties, the camp offered a therapeutic camping program that drew from disciplines of social work, psychiatry, education, and recreation, serving campers diagnosed as having behavioral or emotional problems, so. A lot of history and a lot of campers came through here. Um, we do have very thorough documentation of a lot of this history at Campbell-Gottwin. The district acquired the camp in oh four and continued to lease it to the YMCA for a few years before they declared Bank of C. Um, we had to demo a lot of the buildings, they were just beyond repair, they weren't being kept up. So, we have a couple of buildings left there now that we plan on, um, keeping, the Will Brant Barn and the Rec Hall. The photo in the center, lower center, is the Rec Hall, and then the one on the right is just one of the many that ended up getting demoed, just an example of kind of how those looked, and the, the plan on the left shows the original twenty-nine structures. Uh, we do have a master plan, proposed architectural plans for the Rec Hall and archaeological reports. Uh, you can see the Will Brant Barn pictured in the upper right, too, and then that's the Rec Hall in the lower left. Uh, the beautiful deck looks over the Fox River. The strategy here is to just maintain the building envelopes, uh, to prevent the buildings from, um, degrading. And next, we would want to improve vehicular access to get down to the Rec Hall because it's not really close to, um, the road, so we would need to put a drive-in and front lock. And then, uh, also providing pedestrian access to the riverfront, is that sent high demand? Moving up to Glacial Park, Weidrich Farm, hopefully, these are all familiar with Weidrich. That was the first rental project that we did in the eighties. Uh, the Weidrich family owned one of several of the farms in Glacial Park. Built in nineteen oh two, uh, we have a lot of history on this because we purchased it from the Weidrich sisters, and we have a recorded interview with them where they described what life on the farm was like, it's pretty interesting. So we renovated it first in the eighties and then remodeled again in the nineties to change the office space around. It has been vacant since twenty-ten, when Lost Valley opened and education was the last to move out of Weidrich. There's some renovation photos there, you can see pouring the floor, and, um, it was a big job, it was just an old rustic barn. The strategy here would first be, um, low-hanging fruit, repair the deck, there's some problems with the deck, so we plan to fix that this year, hopefully. And then we can reserve the deck to people for, um, gatherings, to get people over there and, and maybe get some interest in the barn. Uh, eventually, in the future, some hopes and dreams for the barn would be maybe a history museum that could focus on agriculture of the county, um, trading posts or equipment, rental depot, and maybe an event space. Powers Walker, you can see it from Weidrich Farm, they're pretty close together, built in eighteen fifty-four by the Powers family. Um, now they only lived there for nine years before they sold it to Samuel Walker, who owned a lot of the surrounding farmland. This house has gone through all the phases of restoration, it's our shining example of what some of these other structures could become. Um, this was used year-round by the education department, they have events, um, quite a bit. Eighteen fifties house and barn, twenty-six, twenty-five thousand, just about, volunteer hours, uh, a lot of work went into this. The house has been placked, as mentioned, and it's in great shape. We do normal maintenance to upkeep this house. So Richmond was settled in eighteen thirty-seven by William A. McConnell. Um, he first camped underneath an oak tree here at the site of the McConnell Farmstead. Um, he moved around a couple times before eventually building this house, though, in eighteen seventy. He built a farm across the street first and then came back to the site when he gave that farm to his son. Um, this, the other, the private farm across the road is already fully restored, but this farm we've been working on. Um, there are many buildings here, uh, two big barns, some outbuildings, quite a bit. There is a master plan to restore and develop this site for education. This would be slightly different than Powers Walker as it's a little bit newer, so the educational focus would be, um, a different timeframe slightly. So three of the structures are in good, just stable condition, and we have new roofs on two of those, and we do have roof material for the third one, it just hasn't been installed yet, that got installed a few years ago. There is an active volunteer group that does vegetation management out there. Similar strategy here, really just maintain the building envelopes to keep them stabilized. Um, we'd like to install that roof on the Granary Building, that's the one that needs a new roof, and we have the material, but it hasn't been complete yet. And then, kind of like Fox Bluff, include, improve vehicular access to get people there to actually use the site, um, and then eventually program the house, too. Like Powers Walker. Okay, Brookdale, here, we have Kennedy Way Station, it's just on Route fourteen, so we drove past it on the way here. Red Brick Reforevival House, it's stately and formal-looking. Um, it was built in eighteen fifty-three as a, a private home along the Northwest Stagecoach Route. And John Kennedy allowed, um, women travelers to stay there for a fee. Here at Brookdale, there were nine saloons, and mostly men stayed here, it was really rowdy, so it wasn't safe for the women, so that home was available for women to stay at. Um, so the roof of this house was torn off in nineteen sixty-eight by a tornado. Um, this, how, it was owned by the Paulson family for many years in between there, and, um, the couple that inherited the house were Lyle and Mercedes Paulson, and they decided to restore the house and put a new roof on it and make it their home. So they spent about a decade doing that before they moved into it. Um, and put a lot of unique touches on the house on the inside. The district purchased the house in two thousand and one from Mercedes. There isn't a master plan for this one. Uh, there is core access because the driveway is kind of on the side of the hill, there's not good sightlines on Route fourteen. This house is placked by the Historical Society, though. Um, there are some local issues. We have a leak in the roof currently, and the lintels, uh, around the windows need to be replaced, they're kind of bright. When we talk about the way we evaluate these and what stage they're at, we have kind of four phases, we can divide them up, uh, phases of implementation. Stabilization would be the first, and that's the pressing needs to ensure the structural integrity. And then we have restoration, interior and exterior, remove anything that's not time period appropriate. Adding public infrastructure. And then finally, fully functional, um, which would include some of those maybe educational elements like interpretive signage or whatever else was laid out in the master plan. Here's a chart showing kind of where all of those places we talked about are at along that spectrum. Many of them, the stabilization has started or been complete, and then a few have moved on to be fully functional, the two at Glacial Park. Um, McConnell is halfway there, and the others have a ways to go. This spreadsheet kind of shows all of the data compiled and how we keep track of where these are at. And then, the maintenance items that we've identified as coming up. And the boxes in green are things that have been budgeted for in the next three years. So, there's some painting projects, um, the foundation issues, one, that's Weidrich Farm's deck repairs, and then, um, some, I guess, roof for Kennedy, you got that, too, yeah. Okay. And then just as a comparison, I made this pie chart to show, you know, how much money do we spend on these within the overall budget, and it's four percent out of, um, all of the proposed capital projects for next year, so it's relatively a small percentage to keep these stabilized. And I will conclude by saying that in McHenry County, we're proud of our identity and our landmarks. Um, if a picture is worth a thousand words, a three-dimensional structure is maybe priceless. Um, and if only all the walls could talk on all these structures. So, I'm sure you guys have some questions.
When you said the Kennedy House was purchased, it was purchased, it was the land that we were purchasing, the, the house just happened to be on it.
Exactly, that's how, yeah, all of them have been acquired, I think.
In terms of the, the roof, uh, with the leak, what, what's the plan for that in terms of?
Kind of ten, on the Kennedy.
Yeah, it's a, it's a cedar shake roof, and you know, it's got a lot of, um, weather exposure, and we're thinking it would be best to just replace that with asphalt shingles. It's less expensive, and because this one isn't being used and it's not, people don't go there, you know, to keep the integrity, the historical integrity is why we do the cedar shake, but the asphalt would suffice to keep it dry.
We have costs on both?
Yes.
Cedar and asphalt.
Yes, estimated, we would need to then get three quotes and stuff, but, um, we have estimates.
On the asphalt, we might have, yeah.
So if the potential, and we don't know, it needs to be assessed, right, but I think if it's under the thirty thousand, we'll get, we get multiple quotes, we don't have to take it out of bid.
Right.
We believe it's gonna be greater than that than what the specifications. But it's not an item that, i- it's obviously something the board would want to get direction for tonight, to proceed or not to proceed. And then, um, it's not an item that there's funds in the budget for, so it would be one of those things that we would look to. Additional funds or doing something different, going back to our budgets, where that would be. If we're gonna take care of it this year, although now we're in the winter, or if we're in the next year, then we, between tentative and final, make an adjustment to fiscal year. And that is worst-case scenario, too. If the roof, we will get three quotes, we have to, and then, you know, if the roofers say, well, you could repair it, if it's repairable within a certain logical dollar amount, we might choose that route, we'll do, we'll do what makes the most sense. Right?
Yes, and I believe you have a, um, summary, um, in this packet, or uh, uh, specifically about, you know, why and what that would be, but the numbers that we have the quotes for that you talked about came in twenty twenty-one, so they're.
And we adjusted for inflation a little bit.
And just so, okay, we've got something to, again, like she said, evaluate it and.
On this, on our list here, this is probably, that roof is probably the most critical one right now, you'd say?
It's making, yeah. It's the one that if you don't do something with, you would lose, you know, the, the opportunity for anything with that building faster.
Quickly.
Quickly.
Right, because, you know, the mold will start growing pretty quickly if water's getting in, so.
Yeah, that report, obviously, we don't know what exactly happened, right, but, uh, being in, from twenty twenty-one, it said it was in, it was gonna last several years, um, I know that's three years, you don't know what several means from the, um, consultant, but, um, we hope that would be a few more, so something obviously had to, you know, happen that has sped that up.
We've kicked that can down the road quite a bit, so, as far as that roof, so it probably needs to be addressed.
I, yeah, I don't, I, I agree, I don't think you can kick it down the, the road any further and continue to have the structural integrity that the building needs. What'll happen is, water will get in, uh, it's a closed environment, and it'll turn the mold instantly, um, ruining the inside very quickly.
So water's already, it's leaking, so water's already
Yeah.
in there.
Yeah, in, in the spring, I believe it was May, we were in the building, and there was no issue at that point in time. This fall, uh, maintenance, building maintenance staff were doing, uh, you know, inspections and looking around at things, and they noticed the leak in there and said, hey, there's, there's a leak, and, uh, so at that point in time, it rose to a higher level, we had to bring it front of you guys.
It doesn't take long, the more compounds, everything, it's like that.
And not to say that on these other sites, those structures too, depending on the structure that we're talking about, they're at the same similar fight we, we talked about before, earlier on the year, the Fox Bluff with the, um, Chicago Tribune Building, and that has been the same thing, but that had been a lot of remodeling that had been done, so the, again, historical integrity beyond that it, it exists there is pretty much gone, but in these other buildings, so that's kind of the update for staff, we had a sub-working group that wanted to review and discuss these. Um, we've been approached by a variety of different historical groups, the Historical Society, which is out of Union, and that is who has done the placking, as Jen had shared, and did a great job on the presentation, and pulls together. On the, um, Kennedy Way Station, there is the WA McConnell Foundation, which is different than the McConnell Friends Group that committed with the board when we did the master plan and had great intent, they were to raise money to help with that project, that never delivered on that front, but now there's a new group, a foundation, who is active in the area, and they are very much, um, they're participating in the work phase, as was mentioned, and they are very much interested in seeing us do something and invest over at the McConnell site, of course, because that's in their area. And then we have the McHenry County Historical Preservation Commission, which is the group that placked the, on our request, the Powers Walker home that's in Glacial Park, and that group, um, is appointed by the county board, and, uh, they do historic, uh, you know, uh, not only for historic structures, oaks, um, but that is a group, and again, their area is a little bit more binding than the signage that the, that the society has. So each of those three.
So each of those three groups have undergone in the last year, changes within their leadership. And uh, so we are going to be pulling them together, um, just to talk about where the district is committed on February uh, twelfth. And so really tonight was to get the board's direction, so we can share with them kind of where our priorities and commitment and, and what we have been doing to preserve historic structures, which we've done a lot over the time. And of course, we've had resource limitations of, of dollars that.
Like you say, we need to sort of look at what we have available for that too, to make decisions.
And the McConnell um, property, is that the building next to the preschool?
Yeah.
Church?
We looked at it.
We have, it's a double time.
That's what the big barn is, it's falling down.
Correct, yeah.
So I just, I just wanna, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe when we went through this, don't know when, a couple of years ago, we had a discussion on, on, on this building, Kennedy Way, Kennedy Way Station, that there was no plan for future use for this house that.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that still is.
Yeah, still correct. Still the situation.
Yeah, still is. It's not to say there couldn't be an idea brought to us, but like, I mean, I thought maybe an artist's guild or something would want to lease it, but at this point, no.
So you're asking why bother?
Well, I know that the historical, I know the, the historical society would be upset. I would love to, I know that we'd love to save everything, is this the house we need to be saving right this second? If there's no future plan to use this house, that's just my question.
Well, and that's kind of why we thought, let's just throw some asphalt shingles up there. Let's not spend money on replacing the shake, the cedars. Let's do the less expensive, keep it safe route, so we don't set up any flacks.
That, that roof should technically, you ask, a good twenty to thirty years.
So is it the whole, is it the, excuse me?
We don't, we don't have to, we don't, we don't know the details.
Oh, so maybe it's just a little patching.
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah, that was gonna say.
I think it's beyond patches, we left, we've left that, John, John, he's, he's looked, he's looked.
I think the point is that, that one of the things is, this is a historic structure, it is on, we have very few.
Very visual.
We have a lot of buildings that the district has already said they're not of historic value. The ones that are presented are the ones that we said, yes, there's historic value. And while it may not be our primary, there is a, a, because we do a lot of cultural history interpretation of how people lived on the land, the lands that we acquire. So that oral history, that's really part of what we're committed to as well. But with the resources, if in fact, you know, we don't want to be in a position, and again, it's a board decision, but at least you could get by to a later time for an opportunity. If it goes, then we're saying, we're just allowing it, and that could be looked at the district. So I think from my perspective, and again, I'm just going to allow that shared, I think, if the minimum is, I don't believe we're in a place to say, we're going to let this raise that structure. I think there is a historical past here on the campus, um, and it's a building that, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to open it up to be utilized. And again, this is research, if you look at other, whether it be the national parks, you look at surrounding forests, which are districts, some facilities, they make their full interpretation of opening it up for visitors and their certain standards. Others, they keep the facade of the outside and just, nobody's ever going to go inside, but they keep the outside structure, so it's the photographs. It represents the history of the time. So there's a, a big continuum of, of investment where you wish to be at the end of the day. And the board could decide that, you know, raise it, I mean, that's an option, and that could be a future decision.
Twenty years from now, you might really regret not keeping it.
Yeah, my preference is to just, you know, do something to stop it.
Very visual, that's the thing.
Yeah, right, it's nice architecture.
Like we said, there's quite a few buildings that we have.
You never know.
Like the Fox Bluff Building, I think that might be best repaired, plus it's, no one can see it. It's like, unless we're, that's a dog.
But I guess I, I.
So I mean, those are some decisions we need to make, but yeah.
Do, are, are we, are we hurting things by delaying the, the real things? I, it seems like we've been talking.
Well, we've been, we need to do something.
For a year. Yeah.
We got a, we got a clue tonight, Jen has done a lot of research on the history and the, the clue is that that roof has got to be forty years old because they were doing renovations in the eighties. That's a cedar roof. You don't get fifty years out of them, you know, and so it's probably, that's why it's wearing out. The roof is worn out and uh, and the shakes are worn out and it's, it's time to replace it. So uh, it, it'd be one of those things, and that's why we're, we're bringing it to you and saying, uh, I, I think I said it, as you said, Linda, a few, a couple of years ago, I said it. It, it was kind of put up or dropped at that time, you know? But we didn't get a second opinion, then opinion came back and said, we got a couple of years. We, we got a couple of years out of it. Okay, so that was two thousand and twenty-one. Round two thousand and twenty-four, and lo and behold, we've got a leak going on that it's really following that sequence. And again, when you, when, when you take that, that little piece of information, the clue, I mean, it, it is time to replace it. Um, if, if the board wants to save that building, that's the first step.
Back to the blue tarp. I've been the same one right after the, right after the hurricane went through, I mean, you know, you see these things all of day, good work. For, on an interim basis, can we do that until we, until we can get the roof done?
Well, we need to move on.
I don't, well, how do you roof in the winter?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, my, my guess is that we would be going through the process of getting the quotes or find the investigation that, that Amy was talking about, we do that now. If the board says do that, we would do that now, then we would get a better idea of the, you know, could it be repaired? Could, you know, we'd get more information and then roll on it as soon as we can in the spring. So, you know, that, that would be my thought process on it now.
They've been roofing all winter though, too.
Yeah, they, they, they will roof in the winter, there's no doubt about it. I just want roofing when it's zero.
Well, right.
Is there a temporary tarp or something?
So it's already leaking, so what, if we're gonna, if you're gonna put, if you're gonna invest to put a new roof on it, why not do something temporary immediately? We're getting a big snow supposedly, why are we still letting it leak?
Well, so once we get quotes from roofers, I think they will guide us and we could have maybe one of the roofers put the tarp up, uh, that, the roof is too high for in-house for our guys to climb on. Yeah. It's an insurance issue, yeah.
We, we would have to hire a contractor to do it, and the last time, Linda, you may remember, we talked about this, the board's direction was not to invest in the historic structures.
Right.
So until, until you tell us that, that we need to, that was kind of the direction that.
I, I totally understand, and that's where I'm going, because that's the conversation I remember happening.
Yes.
So I'm just getting clarification about.
February twelfth, I think it is, so we'll get some idea from them, but it just seems to me that it'll stop the damage from increasing.
Yeah, I think we need to pick this one out and, yeah, go ahead, let's investigate further, let's get the quotes, let's get the.
Just, just a question, yeah. All right, so they go and they look and then they say, wow, jeez, the plywood's rotted or the one of the roof that's rotted and there's rafters are rotted and.
Well, there's gonna be some of that, I'm just saying.
I, I get it, I, I'm, I'm hearing you, yeah.
Well, we won't know until we.
I'm not trying to be, I mean.
Well, let's find out.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's find out, so everybody consensus that we can move on and find out? I think we're all, Linda?
I'm, I'm fine with finding out.
Finding out, okay.
So, so we're going to go through that process, what I'm not hearing, we'll present something back to the board, because it sounds as if, although there's an immediate, whether that just be an email, once we get the costing, if it's under the bid threshold, it's not a budget item. So we still need to come back, share with you, here's a.
Right, we need to approve it, if there's any action.
Yeah. The bid will probably look like we'll do it for this much, but when we tear it apart,
There's gonna be.
There's gonna be, you know, ninety dollars for every sheet of plywood and, you know, material and labor as you need it for the, the, the joyce. But did you say it's just a leak or a couple leaks or, I mean, what, what?
I don't know the extent of leaks, I've not been in there, John, so I, I have not seen it, but.
I don't think it's a, it's terrible because the.
So it'll probably maybe twenty to twenty-five thousand, if it's not a lot of leaking, right?
Yeah.
So, but.
Well, let's find out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay. Go ahead.
That's all, we have questions around any of the other sites.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, because we're going to be going in with the historical groups and their, and so we want to be able to how to navigate a prioritization.
Is, can I go back with the McConnell Farm stud? Isn't that the one with all the buildings and we decided not to fix that one?
Well, we.
And then we got back, backlash from saying that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, everybody's got ideas, but no money.
Right, exactly.
I looked at that barn, that barn is shot, I mean, I looked at those buildings.
I remember going there myself and seeing that.
North side is gonna fall in, fall out. I mean, everybody's got a little barn, it's like.
Okay, so what would be our next step on that?
So, you know, we, what, what staff did is they generally gave you the highlights and kind of our strategies to show what we're investing in. So this year you see painting on the McConnell home. Um, the Powers Walker is part of our routine maintenance piece, so that's.
Yeah, that's up to snub.
And Weidrick is incorporated into something that's part of our main center of our park, and so we've incorporated that into that. So I think the, the group, um, when we meet with them, they are, of course, they have already expressed, I've shared emails with you um, about the, when are we investing in the barn, the T-bar? They want to see that invested, they want to see what action or putting resources into the McConnell Farm. So I guess we can find out if there's any resources, because they're looking to say, what can they do? Can they, you know, uh, raise some funds? Can they, can they get quotes? Can they help facilitate something like this? And so that is an option, I mean, there's a lot of different options we could explore. Um, you know, I think our focus though is, there's some buildings that can, that need investments, that can be more. So are they willing, can we agree that maybe we can't save them all, right? There's not a worthy, and maybe we can do more interpretive sign. That I think is the conversation there. Um, the Fox Bluff, I think with, we didn't prioritize or need be if the staff had to go back or if the board had priority, their staff had their thoughts on, on some unique opportunities here. Um, you know, to where in Fox Bluff, you know, the, the rec hall is a beautiful, that has a really long, large, regional, national historical presence. And um, and, and so that's a, that's an opportunity.
But. Yeah, I think, I think the um, again, you can see where we are in the budget, um, asking, you know, to again, to maintenance on um, the two barns or to the two homes that we already committed to from an education standpoint. Like Elizabeth said, I, I think the biggest question is, do you want us to engage in a conversation with the community about McConnell? Um, I think the, the others, we, we have strategies for, um, we're going to work them into, you know, future budgets and those conversations will happen, you know, when we have numbers and have, and have plans. But I think the, the outlier and the one that is rising to the top that needs your guidance to tell us how do we, how do we navigate this is with, specifically with McConnell. And we don't have the answers, and we're not asking you to say yes or no, we're gonna save. It's just, are you even interested in allowing us to have the conversation? Do you want us to have a conversation? Or just is the decision, no, it's, we're, we're done, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on the house and, and program. And that is our strategy, because, you know, that's what we've already committed to and what we have resources to do, but um.
I guess my suggestion would be that uh, yes, you, you know, we could, can move forward and looking at, but I think with this group that we're meeting with uh, in February, I think it was twelve, fourteen? Well, um, we'll glean a lot more information on what other help and these other groups you better possibly give. And then we come back and get together then, and maybe develop a plan.
Because I think, you know, their thoughts, I mean, our focus is on our buildings, and they've got focused not only on our buildings, but they've got other things they're looking at. And my view is if we have a scanner approach and we can't raise the funds, or if they wish to raise funds and we're all over the place, nothing will be, nothing will be seen. It would be great to rally around and let's take care of one, and then we can move on to, you know, a next one.
So we're gonna need to primarily focus on a certain one or two buildings there that we know.
No, from our standpoint, I'm sorry, it would, it would be, right, we would, we would love to have it be one, not of McConnell, but of the five that you saw today. It would be really great if the community and all of the different groups could channel, you know, and, and, and sort of step outside of themselves and say, okay, for the greater good, I understand, I can't, th- these are too far gone, even though McConnell is their, you know, um, primary focus, but if they could see the collective pull and the benefit that they could do, maybe it's not there. And it is Fox Bluff because it had, but we, again, singularly, each of us can't, or them, you know? Um, so we were trying, what we think Jen did a great job is, is showing of all of the history. And um, I know it's hard, it's like picking a child, your favorite, but um, we just can't, like Elizabeth said, we can't do it all, and we need everybody's help to um, to join together to save that one at a time. I don't know that we'll do that, but I think.
Yeah, unfortunately, those other groups have their agendas.
They do, and then.
And that's the situation.
And fair, right, everybody does, but at least we could make a concerted effort to, you know, um, show them what else is going on out there and where we could help, uh, where they can help us.
I'm just gonna say my opinion and then, if, you know, I think Fox Bluff is a beautiful area, it is beautiful. There's nothing like it going out there and just seeing.
It'd be nice to develop that.
It would be so nice that that be a usable space.
Especially with the access to the river.
Yes, eh, access to the river, and McConnell is just there, I mean, I don't, that's just, it's just there.
I've got roads on two sides.
It's got roads on two sides, it's not an easy access, it's. I, I believe the conservation district will get more use out of restoring Fox Bluff.
Well, and that's what we're gonna have to make some hard decisions after we sort of see what these other groups might be able to do. And then move forward with that, I think.
But I think that from that direction, I think that's where staff is landing, as far as Fox Bluff is a really neat opportunity. I think it's in the population area, we know it's got access of the existing site, that we have trails, it just, it's, it has a master plan. So if there's an investment, that is the place, the shining star. Not to say that there's not an interest, but maybe, you know, again, these other districts have allowed, they licensed over to these nonprofits to take over and, and give it to them to, 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 to raise the funds and take responsibility for it. And this is, and we allow lease to them and then, and then they have full control of doing the restoration.
Yeah, I like that, there you go.
You know, that's an option.
It's an option, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's turned Fox Bluff into like a triple R or something.
Yeah.
Just get what you wanted to do that glandly.
But it seems.
Yeah, they made that guy look all over.
This is a full search organization.
Yes, I, I, I absolutely fell in love with that when I went.
Sure.
Toward it.
But we need to look at it again and see if it is solvable.
You're kind enough to take me in, you're very impressive.
Yeah.
But these are, these, these are the difficult ones, because right, we, it's, it's how do you buy time or things that are too far gone? But, but you can't do everything at once, so prioritize, we, we haven't had a priority. And, and that's something really important, and then we need to get everybody rallying and collective. Because when you get people together doing and working towards a common goal, you can do amazing things.
Yeah, and there's some resources available that we don't even know about, especially at Fox Bluff, uh, with some of the history behind it, border trade, et cetera. You know, there are sometimes funds available through those type of agencies and stuff. So, all right, well, I guess uh, as far as the Kennedy, I think we have to sort of look at that individually at this point and uh, say yea or nay if we're done to, well, they're gonna get price, get in price and app, so, okay, we're, we're good on that. And then we're gonna just compete in February and try to get consensus, we'll report back what happens then. Hey?
I agree with you, Linda, that Fox.
You must stop sharing.
My grandmother, when I came there, and you should cook for those people.
Oh.
These in forties.
Yeah.
Way back, yeah, yeah. And that was used for like the four kids in Chi- Chicago, they could take them out there and.
That was their country, yeah.
Yeah, it is country.
I remember going there as a kid, when it was like really populated and moving with all the city, the neat place.
Well, the YMCA, yeah, pretty active for a while there. Unfortunately, it was that accident.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We talked about it, I mean, I know about it, the reason as to why it went bankrupt, um, they still.
Um, they still brought kids from the inner city and allowed them to camp there and everything and uh, a group from Chicago, uh, kids were there at midnight. Um, they got up and they went out and they found these.
And all those little.
Those paddle boats?
Yeah, sure.
They, and they weren't chained up, and they got them in the water when the plugs were there. And. I think it was three kids around.
I didn't know that either.
That's what, that's what happened. So then, uh, they went bankrupt and then after ten years or so, the YMCA of Chicago came in working with Sage and now, you know, now they're back up and running, but that's what happened.
So. Talk about a good confidence in it. Yeah. Okay. So that's where we're at with that. Uh, move on to new business, uh, six point one, we wanna review what's on the consents. For me?
You know, this I want to mention, um, is twelve point five and twelve point six on our leases, and I have spoken with President Tom and Secretary Fritz earlier today, um, and then why don't you give us a summary of where we are with some of our?
Uh, I can give you a summary of where we're at, uh, with non-compliance this year and, uh, I hear faces with, um, requests to do active leases and negotiate on. Um, this is a kind of a perennial problem. In our leases, we ask our operators to supply um, a group of information at the end of the crop year, um, so keep track of what type of chemicals are being used on district property and um, how yields are going and things like that. So, um, at operators need to have that information in by December thirty first. Um, that's in the lease document itself. This year, Brenna sent out a reminder in November that that deadline was coming up. Um, so at the end of the year, uh, we'll kind of give a little grace period because of the holidays, really don't start looking at who's got their information in until we get back after the holidays. But I understand right now we have sixty leases that are non-compliant. They either haven't turned in their lease reports or they're missing something like their proof of insurance. Um, that sounds like a lot of leases, but it's actually only twenty-eight operators, because a lot of these leases are multiple leases where one member of the family has one lease, another member has another lease with the same operation, and we have five of those. So um, we expect the majority, uh, Brenna will be sending out reminders and making reminder files if this information's late. So I expect by the beginning of February, most of that information will be in, but it is information we have to chase down about every single year. Um, in terms of, uh, the leases that are coming up, uh, for negotiation, uh, we have fourteen leases, um, that have operators that are non-compliant at this point. Um, and that breaks down to five operators. So our position on this is we're, we want permission to negotiate for next year's lease, because we know the lease is gonna run out at the end of this year, and we like to get ahead of it, because the negotiation process takes some time. So what we're suggesting to the board, uh, on both execution of leases that have been signed for this year and negotiation for leases that are gonna come up next year, then until the operators are compliant and get their information in, they either won't negotiate or won't execute until that's completed.
Right.
I think that kind of sums it up.
Yeah, so they'll have the thirty days, so they've been given advance, they've known, we'll give them thirty days. Um, and then I think what would happen, if they're not in compliance, then we want to be prepared to put those, those out to bed. We go public bed. They have an.
Of course, that window is pretty short. We need to jump on it at the end of thirty days and then, you know.
I think by taking that position, then that will address the compliance issues. And again, if there's something else that we're not, there might be a one-off or a few, that there's individual circumstances, and I think the district is always held a very accommodating, flexible, um, you know, but I think at this point, when I heard the numbers and I didn't want this to go forward to the board knowing that this, just the timing of this.
Yeah.
And the conscience to approve a lease when we've got tenants that are not in compliance.
Right.
I've got a question.
No.
Just looking at, some of these are like, well, some are two years that are coming off.
Mm-hmm.
And then some of them are, uh, let me see, five, six, seven, some of them are like seven years or six years. How come there's?
Um, some, there are, there are a couple of leases that.
Right here, um, margins. And then one of them's only has one year.
Which, yeah.
What's that thing again? It's born somewhere you want?
It's on that page, hopefully.
So leases will have different timeframes on them for various reasons. For example, if, uh, if the area is coming out of production because we had a grant to do restoration and they only have a one-year lease, because we know at the end of that lease, we're gonna be converting it to something else. If it's, uh, one of our new conservation leases, which is a voluntary conservation lease, where the operator agrees that they'll, they'll put in place even better practices than we already have, um, the trade-off on that is we give them a longer lease, because they're willing to do more conservation practices on the land. Um, the organic lease that we went into, uh, is a longer-term lease, because it takes longer to become certified organic. So lease term will be dependent a lot on what the lease is for. Some of our hay leases, for example, are only single-year leases, because we're, we're only cutting that area for one year. It'll rest a couple of years and then it'll be back in hay production. So, uh, Ed, if you have questions on specific ones, I can get that information for you on Monday and what those leases are, or on Tuesday, or what those leases are and why those lease terms are.
Just tomorrow.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, what else, uh?
I have one more question. How do we receive that data that we have to chase down?
So we actually send a form out.
Okay.
It, so that we're getting the same information from everyone. Uh, you can mail it. Um, I think we have an option there to submit it digitally. So there's a, a lot of different ways that you can do it, and they, you know, we always run into this problem at the end of the year, especially if the harvest is late because of conditions. Sometimes people aren't done harvesting until, you know, until December. Um, so, but this year was except, exceptionally fine.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So do we wanna, um, how do we wanna know that?
So what I can do, um, I've redone the, uh, board summary. So we have two options tonight. We can either, I can add that to the motion and I can repost, because we have time within period to repost the agenda with that specific provision. We go into consent agenda, or someone can ask to have it pulled on Tuesday night and just amended with our recommended change. And, um, as that I've shared on both twelve point five and twelve point six, both goes off, taken by ineligible votes, and I don't have to repost it. I'm good anyway.
Let's do that without reposting. Let's.
So we just add a provision that says if we don't receive this information thirty days, they will be ineligible to, we knew their lease.
We'll, we'll put the lease out to bed.
Yeah, it just says here, if, if you see the motion, um, after, uh, for example, twelve point five, nineteen particles continue, probably one point eight, eight, five point seven, three acres, continue to find whatever the tenant has fulfilled all the requirements of the current lease. That way I'm not separating who is not in compliance or that, but that gives us the authority, you know, we've seen the list right now.
Right.
And, um.
And, and those letters are sent to you all from.
So I would just pull twelve point five, twelve point six, have someone pull it.
Well, I'll pull that and we'll.
We'll read it, with a little language.
Yeah. That'd be the easiest way.
Thank you.
Okay. That, uh, anything else you have to say with the?
Well, the only thing that you have, well, we're gonna, it looks like, uh, just the landscapes is on the printer. Um, obviously, we're expecting a winter, uh, snowstorm here, so we're discussing kind of in general with electricity and our buildings we were talking about. We have, uh, operations to develop that blue light special in our windows. You see blue or red, and that helps us in drive-by. If we see something's under express, we're able to, to get in there. They're ready. And the, the crew is already out with plowing and they're ready to go. And we have cancelings. Can the lights be on for them?
Yes.
Right, but they've been really ready for a snowmobile trail. Should we get somebody packing in? And anything else down in your team? I mean, you guys.
Uh, we implemented the, uh, cold building, um, weather approach, uh, uh, staff's going around today. All thermostats go up and stay up, um, uh, open cabinets, things like that, just anything we can do. You know, they're all drafty buildings, but, uh, we've survived worse, so.
Yeah.
We'll get through this one too.
It's, it's really cold for this year's standard, but yeah, we've had twenty below as well, yeah.
So I, I'm not anticipating any problems. Like I said, uh, one of the last things we'll do uh, on Friday is just remind everybody, do those thermostats, weather set. No, I don't go down.
Good.
And we'll be introducing, um, several new team members to the board. We're really excited and hopeful to have one more in place, uh, soon from our law enforcement team, but, but we'll go through, uh, that's been very positive. A lot of, uh, interest in our position, so we're definitely making the hires, um, as well as, unfortunately, with COVID's making us round, so there's been a lot of staff after the holidays out, unfortunately.
One of these are really, yes, good news is that in soil associations and pubs do a lot of work and they don't tend to get a lot of time on the, on the on the, on the floods in McHenry County. Um, the situation we have rolling now with these two heavy wet snows on top of one another, get that compacted, and then that cold on top of it will actually freeze, and that'll be the base. So every time we get snow, any snow that comes from down, it should present decent riding conditions or better riding conditions. It's really, this is kind of the scenario that they look forward to, so. Hopefully, we'll have some decent riding insurance.
Yeah, the only other thing I just throw out too, we had a request, I think, to the board, I shared earlier on here with the main state there.
Oh, sure.
Uh, about requesting, you know, they do, they're a great partner, they're across the way, wanted to get into, uh, trail access into Glacial Park, and, uh, staff looked at that, appreciated, they picked it up, they went further, they spoke with the, uh,居民 township highway commissioner to see if there was a way, because, um, sightlines are pretty poor in that area, and we did communication back that they believe that this is not an option for us sightlines, you know, not that, from a safety perspective. So I will be preparing a correspondence to go back out to main state, uh, therapy, uh, perhaps, I understand, but even staff are taking upon, it takes sometimes a little time to get along, but they looked at it as an opportunity, and I really appreciate that and really trying to wind up with where our trailhead is. But, um, you know, some things just.
Is that where they have a hole in the fence anyways? If they sort of break through or no?
Well, if you remember, right, I think there were multiple, um, locations that, um, the private owner, neighbors had cut the and so they had a, so the main state assumed that that was okay. Um, but they had, they, they asked, um, but, um, so, yeah, I think those, those have all been closed up. Um, and we haven't had any trouble since then, but that's what, you know, conjured up the idea. Yeah, if we can come up with some other, uh, way of transporting them, but, yeah, that's, uh, Chris Gom was, was very good, and he understood to wanting to help, but it's just that the road condition, the speed, the curves, the, 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 to pirate B, it's just you don't, you're gonna have.
Well, he said the street, the speed limit was too high and everything.
Yeah, all of it.
You have to go through, yeah, a lot of steps to go over that, so, good. Alright, we'll move on to eight point one, uh, Ed?
Just like.
Oh, it's like.
At, and at your, uh, at your tables, you have a set of instructions on, uh, would you like water level monitoring equipment to install?
Yeah.
Um, first, let me preface it by saying, uh, while we were working on getting a contract for this equipment, um, we uh, we monitored, uh, in the field, the levels in the water control structure there, um, once in March, uh, or twice in April, twice in May, twice in June, once in July, August, twice in September, once in October, once in November. So from, really from the time we had our meeting in, uh, February with the even drainage district, we visually monitored photographed where the water levels were at, at Goose Lake and also in the water control structure that controls that level. So we have good records. Um, that way for March, we installed on December nineteenth. Um, the instructions here are how to go online, and you can look at the real-time reporting of the water levels at both the water control structure and at Goose Lake itself, and I just checked them before the board meeting, and, um, it has not moved a whole lot since December nineteenth. So this is good for a couple of reasons. It, it is, I think it's important that we work cooperatively with the drainage district, um, but it also gives them and us real-time information on how the water levels at Goose Lake are functioning. As we have precipitation events, whether we have heavy rains, we have heavy snowmelt. Um, given a couple of years of this, we're really gonna know how that, how that system functions to what kind of water is coming into it, whether it's a one-inch rain, a half-inch rain, a two-inch rain. So it's functioning well. If you have trouble sleeping, I suggest you log on. Same.
I'll make sure. I'll make sure the Vodwergans get a copy.
Okay, please do. I think we, we may have already sent them.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Public comment number two. Anybody out there?
Don't see anyone.
Anything else that we've forgotten?
I have a public comment.
I was gonna say, we were just about to say, Sean, hi.
I'm sorry, everybody. My day got completely away from me, and then Elizabeth texted, and I was like, oh, no, I can't believe it's that late. So that's my public comment. I apologize. Wonderful board meeting. Thank you very much.
We're gonna make you carry firewood or something next time, so.
Actually, sounds fun, yes.
Thanks, Sean. Alright, I guess we can, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn? I move it to adjourn. Okay?
I'll second that.
On the second?
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Trusty Wazor?
Yes.
Trusty Nathan?
Yes.
Secretary Fritz?
Yes.
And President Don?
Yes. Okay, you're adjourned.